And without further ado, welcome to our Board of Education, our regular meeting. Today is October 6th already. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we have on our agenda announcements from the board.
I'll just start. We had our annual retreat about an hour ago at 5 o'clock. We got together. We set some goals for ourselves. And this has been doing this a number of years. Every year we meet, we discuss. This year, we really focused on building on some of the goals that we had last year, setting some goals and objectives for the 25-26 academic year. Some of the new ones that we added, I think that we're looking into our portrait of a graduate that's coming down from state ed that we think is really important to focus on, as well as volunteerism. I was at the Westchester Park School Board Association Monthly Meeting last month, and lots of districts were there, from Scarsdale up to Somers. And a lot of the board members were just talking about the challenges they're facing in terms of getting parents in elementary school through high school to just volunteer and to show up. Some districts had called them Venmo parents that would rather send the money and not show up and do the work. And their districts are struggling with this because, as any PTA knows, you need the people at the fairs, you need people at the concession stands. So we talked a little bit about how we can support our PTAs here. And we have an amazing PTA council and amazing units at each of the buildings. But what else can we do to recognize the hard work that's being done? So that did come up, and that's one of our goals, in addition to many others that we're going to focus on this school year.
Thank you. Anything else? Athletic events?
Boy's soccer varsity just beat Scarsdale 3-2.
Anything?
I just wanted to say thank you to the PTA again. We had a PTA council meeting, and it was our first one. And it was packed with new faces and old faces. So it was great to see so many parents who want to be involved and who want to take part in their children's education and have a role in the schools and be a part of building our community. So just want to say thank you to that.
Thank you.
Last evening, Cheryl and I were at Central Israel Center for the service help of the hostages held in Gaza. We would join, or we joined, Westchester County Executive Jenkins, Congressman Latimer and Lawler, Mayor Roach, State Senator Meyer, Assembly Majority Leader Stuart Cousin, and many, many other elected officials. Of course, hopefully pieces at hand for all parties involved in the Middle East and that the hostages will be released and returned to their loved ones expeditiously. Thank you.
Any other?
I just have one more. The Westchester School Board, excuse me, Westchester Park School Board Association held a meeting for student board members, of which our two board members attended last month. And many districts from around the county were just so impressed with both of you and what you shared and your experience and your role. And both of our students attended our retreat for the last half hour just to see how that went. So just thank you on behalf of the school board and the district for representing us.
I'll mention a few things. So I also want to add, it was really great at PTA council to see what a wonderful turnout there was. And, you know, as a response to, you know, what Kane heard about other areas of the county, that we really have a lot of community involvement here, which is wonderful. And I also was going to mention the student board member orientation at West Putt. And the New York State School Boards Association did one as well and has a lot of great resources for student board members. The National School Board Association had a webinar on federal policy and advocacy and consequences of the government shutdown. And I'll just mention a couple of those highlights. So 1,500 of the 1,700 U.S. Department of Education employees are on furlough. Investigations of civil rights complaints and violations are suspended. Title I and IDEA funding will continue to flow, but no new federal grants will be awarded. School meals seem to be safe, according to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, for at least two months with respect to funding. And some head start programs may be disrupted. I also, with the New York State School Boards Association, was able to attend the CUBE Conference in Los Angeles, which is the Council of Urban Boards of Education. There were some keynote speeches that were really very inspiring. Colin Kaepernick, who is, you know, better known for football, is now in the AI space with respect to education. And he's been doing a lot of really interesting work with literacy and urban boards of education. Bryan Stevenson, who is responsible for the Equal Justice Initiative, also talked about transforming public education and leading with courage. I got to go on a site visit with the Compton School District in the Los Angeles area. And they're doing some amazing work with STEM. And they had drones flying in their cafeteria. They're doing a lot of work with esports. So I look forward to bringing that back to our curriculum and instruction committee. And I was able to attend workshops on, you know, equity, STEM, community engagement, trust and connection, recruitment and retention of staff, and always AI.
Dr. Rika, Cheryl, you brought it up about the federal funding or potential, like, lack of federal funding going forward for Title I and, I think, III. You don't have to speak to it tonight, but could we address some of, I think, our concerns about potential loss of funds for our district? Especially in terms of food. I know we get funded through the state through food and free lunch.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, is that better, John? I think that, you know, the Office of Civil Rights, you remember the term essential?
We don't say that anymore.
Right. I think the Office of Civil Rights is extraordinarily essential. And I think it should be removed from any type of an impact in terms of, you know, what we're seeing right here, you know, to have a situation where, you know, these services, supports, investigations, and accountability is absent in the United States, I think, is a huge detriment to all. And, you know, when we're talking about the title funding and potential, you know, ramifications of reductions in title funding, we're keeping our eye on, you know, of course, White Plains. And we're advocating to make sure that the funding that you're receiving back, because again, it's your money that's coming back to you, some of it. And some of it's going to other states. But to make sure that that's coming back, we're advocating for that. As we move forward, if we do see that there are going to potentially be negative impact to White Plains from the federal funding standpoint, we'll make sure that we communicate that. But we're already talking with Congressman Latimer as well as our state officials to do what they can to continue. And they are doing a ton. Biggest concern right now is related to federal funding is Medicaid and how that's going to play out in the state of New York. Of course, you know, all funding is important funding, but the Medicaid piece is one that is really critical. Funding for food and nutrition is really important to us as well, of course. And, you know, we believe that every child all throughout the United States of America should have access to food when they come to school. So no, thanks, Dr. Lutzi, because we do, we will keep up on that.
And there are advocacy efforts now with the New York State School Boards Association because the House, you know, bill at the moment for next year's funding, there are drastic reductions in title funding. And the Senate bill at the moment, you know, is sort of holding things kind of even. So NISBA is advocating as well.
Move to School Board Recognition Week. And really shouldn't be School Board Recognition Month. We really don't say thank you enough, not just to our Board of Education here, but to all folks who serve on boards of education and who do so because they seek to support all of the children in their communities. It is such a critical position. It's a volunteer position. All of the hours that board members spend planning and leading school districts and supporting community members, of course, you know, you're doing that in addition to being parents and partners and professionals and all of the other things. So for our part, thank you very, very much. But I think we also have a couple of folks who are here with us this evening to speak to you as well, right? We have President Kara McCormick Lyons, and we have Dr. Kimberly Crawford. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
The podium moved.
The podium did move. I did. I looked over there.
We kept looking that way.
Thank you, Dr. Rika. It's our pleasure to be here. We are here together because we believe in your model of leadership. So we certainly work together, all around units. When I'm here to represent the ASA proudly, unfortunately, our president leader couldn't be with us, but I am the representative. So on behalf of our entire unit, we want to just say thank you. I do have a message that was sent, but we want you to know that from the bottom of our hearts, as Dr. Rika mentioned, we appreciate that when we call, you are there. When we're not calling, you're advocating for us. When we need you, we know who to call. So we want to say thank you. But on behalf of the ASA, to the White Plains administrators that are here, there, and everywhere, our administrators and supervisors association extends a heartfelt appreciation to each of you in honor of this important week, New York State Board Recognition Week. We are deeply grateful for your unwavering support, your steady leadership, and your commitment to excellence, especially in challenging times. We just heard about that. We recognize the tremendous time and dedication required of board members, as was already mentioned. And you serve our schools and our community with excellence and love. Your consistent presence in our schools and at all of our district events is to be celebrated. We celebrate our student leaders as well. We want to thank you all for your achievements in supporting our staff, advocating for all of us for public education. This reflects your genuine commitment to the success and well-being of all of us. Thank you for your partnership and for your tireless efforts to nurture and sustain us in a district where every student can learn, every student can grow, and every person can thrive. On behalf of the ASA, we say thank you. It is my pleasure to present to you Ms. Kara Lyons.
Thanks, Dr. Crawford.
I just want to take a moment before I thank you on behalf of the association. The sobering conversation we just had is just a small piece of the work that you do. So thank you. There are so many different facets. I have a list of all of the things that school board members oversee. It's quite the list. And so just personally, thank you. But on behalf of the White Plains Teachers Association, I want to thank you. Next week is School Boards Recognition Week. It should be month, as Dr. Rika said. But you are often quick to say how much you appreciate the work that we do. And so it's really important that you get a sincere, heartfelt thank you. So thank you. And the work that you do happens really quietly often, behind the scenes. This is just the tip of the iceberg, right? It's all of the conversations with constituents, showing up at events, meetings, subcommittees, conversations, text messages. People don't see that, but it's hours of your life. It is the truest form of volunteer work and service. So thank you. Many of you have served for years, some of you even spanning decades. Anyone want to put their hands up? We have people from '06 here. And that's just countless hours and years of your life. So thank you. Your service truly reflects the mission of the White Plains City School District. In this district, we all work together to create opportunities for all students, no matter what. And so thank you for that collaboration and for that work. Have a great week, a great month, and celebrate yourselves.
And before you sit down, on behalf of the board, we thank you. We're thankful for the collaboration. And I always say that together, we're going to do great things. And we will continue to do great things. I think I can say for the board that we are humbled. This is work that's for the greater good. We don't get paid for it, but it's something that you do for the greater good. It becomes part of your fabric to see the vision for the future because we're educating our future. So we are so thankful for our collaboration with you all. And we look forward to even bigger and better collaborations as we move our future forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lyons. Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Also, huge, huge thanks and appreciation to all of the principals in the White Plains City School District because this is also Principal Appreciation Month. I don't care if it's a day or a week. Everybody's getting a month. So thank you, Dr. Crawford, and thank you, of course, to all of our colleagues in the ASA as well. Hard work, great work, and worth every minute of it. Thank you. Before I hand over the portion of the superintendent's report to our amazing ex officio student board members, I would like to welcome, we have two presentations this evening for the Board of Education. First, I'd like to welcome our partners from Durham School Services coming from really far and wide this evening. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here. And ask Dr. Vakara Teish to introduce everybody and get us started. I would like to share with the Board of Education and the community that we are in a much different place today than we were at our last Board of Education meeting with regards to transportation efficiency, customer service, and making sure, literally, that the routes are running as close to optimal as possible. Are there still areas for improvement? Of course, there always will be. And you'll see in just a moment that when you're moving as many vehicles and caring for and transporting as many students, there are always going to be areas for improvement every day because it's just such a big operation. But I cannot say enough in terms of the responsiveness from the Durham School Services team, as well as our team here, working together, working collaboratively to address those critical action items that were identified last month, whether it be, you know, rerouting particular routes for efficiency, changing student routes to better assist families, looking at stops, splitting routes, working really collaboratively and closely with the team at Durham to even put corrective action and to assist particular members of the community. It's all happened in the last, I guess, 29 or 30 days. So it's great to welcome the team here, just to give you the board, to say hello to the board, and to also give the board a real quick update. And of course, we're going to keep at it. And we're going to keep working collaboratively as we go through the academic year and keep working hard to make sure we're continuously improving our service. Dr. AVT? It's efficiency, this.
I want to make sure I'm at the mic.
You want me to come up and help? I got another arm.
Good evening, everyone. And as Dr. Rika said, everybody has been working really hard to work through and push through some of the issues that we were faced this year together. From Durham Bus Services, we have their leadership team, John Ziegler, John Elliott, Britt Leota, and our newest member of the team, Sean Martin.
Okay. To the board, to Dr. Rika, everybody, thank you for this opportunity. Start of the school year is great for us to get out here and kind of introduce ourselves. We have some real simple slides. But again, just wanted to tell you a little bit about who we are introduced. I'm John Ziegler. I'm the Director of Business Development for the East. I cover pretty much the eastern half of the United States in working with customers and contracts and RFPs and all that. Britt Leota, right here, is our Regional Manager for the State of New York. So all Durham, State of New York, that's Britt. John Elliott Jr. here is our Senior Vice President of Customer Service. He is our customer guy that goes coast to coast. You were talking about Compton earlier. They are a customer of ours as well. So just to give a little flavor, pretty much coast to coast and everywhere in between. And then Sean is our nearest member. He's our Area General Manager. Part White Plains is his, right? Just a little bit about our company, Durham School Services as a whole. So we're in 30 states, two provinces, we're in Canada. About 15,000 vehicles throughout North America. 814 school bus routes in the state of New York. We're pretty much all over. We're down in Rochester. We're up in Indian River, up in the North Country, and kind of everywhere in between, Albany throughout. And then we have about 19,000 employees in North America total of all those operations throughout the state, specifically to White Plains. So at least 100 buses operating daily. Some of those are big buses, some of those are smaller vans. We just consider them buses. 700 students serviced. We don't take every student to school, but we may touch every student some point throughout the day, the year, field trips, activities, sporting events, so on. 5,300 miles per day those buses put on every day of the school year. So you put that in perspective, you know, it kind of opens your eyes a little bit because so often we deal with a parent, as we should, and they're thinking about their child's buses. But you put it all together, it's 5,300 miles a day. Over 100 drivers, 25 monitors, and we have 16 full-time staff members and mechanics just here to service White Plains. So we just wanted to, again, introduce ourselves, tell you we're really happy to be here. And our goal is to become part of this community. Talk about the PTA and everything else. We're not here just to be under a contract. We will engage with the community. We'll welcome the opportunity to check in from time to time when you want us to. But again, thank you for the opportunity to serve you and the students. Thank you for the opportunity to be your service partner. And any questions?
Just again, I want to echo the appreciation from the White Plains City School District team members because, again, you know, coming into a new set of scenarios, new buses, new team members, and every year is new routes and new needs. We know that that's always going to be challenging. And coming together like we did, which we will continue to do all throughout this academic year and then, you know, into next, I think we'll continue to go a long way to providing that highest level service that we can to our students. So again, thank you. And I really do need to draw also attention, not just, of course, the Sergio and the team here, but Britt, Sean, you know, I guess at least twice a day, get two check-in emails from Sean, which is awesome. And then anytime, you know, we need to connect with Britt here on the ground to troubleshoot or to try to identify ways that we can work through challenges, he's available to do that. But I think you're absolutely right. You know, when you look at 5,300 miles a day in an 11-square-mile community is, 10 square miles, sorry. Thanks. It is pretty impressive. So we'll keep at it. And thanks to you guys for coming out this evening as well.
Do we have any statistics as yet on the stop-arm cameras?
I'm glad you asked. We sure do. But that'll be for the next portion of the update, if that's okay. You want it now? I'll give it to you now. So we do. And, you know, we were in this period of time where it was a warning period. And for the community members who might not be aware, stop-arm cameras on all of the Durham School Services fleet in partnership with the City of White Plains and Bus Patrol. And so Bus Patrol has reported that in the warning period time, they have 634 approved citations, which is shocking, right? And they're in, just through September 30th, and just in White Plains. And they will be, they have 208 pending to be sent out, and 425 have already been sent out. Now, the warning period's over. And so, of course, you know, citations that are received from here on in are going to be associated with the fine. What we are going to do is going to keep collecting these data throughout the course of the academic year. And then we thought it would be good to come back at the end of the academic year with Bus Patrol to share what the landscape looked like from the beginning of the year to the end. The hope, of course, is that this number, 600, plummets. Right, exactly. And, you know, that will tell, we'll see over time. But yes, so over 600 individual violations in the first month.
One of the interesting data points, of course, would be repeat offenders. Would be a very interesting.
It absolutely would. I don't have access to that depth of information, but yeah, for sure. And I wonder if there is, even in the law, if there is sort of an escalation, yeah, for the repeats, yeah.
Dr. Can I just add?
Sure.
Our bus contract is a large contract. Our P for a bus company. And, you know, we've always contracted bus companies. We don't have our own buses here. For most of us, we always start the school year, and there's bumps in the road with it. We heard from a lot of parents last month. And I think, seeing you here and putting a face with the names and knowing you, we deal with Sergio. We go back and forth with him a lot. But it's nice, and I appreciate you coming out, you know, with an assurance to us that you're here. You came out to speak to us. And we, like I said, we did hear from the community, and there were some concerns. And I, like I said, I do appreciate you coming and explaining, you know, what you do, how many miles you put in, how many employees we have on the ground in White Plains. So thank you.
I have a quick question. So as a driver in White Plains, I recently experienced one of our school buses sort of over to the side of the street with its yellow flashers on. But it was sitting there for quite a while. And I was a little nervous driving by because I had no idea when it might put its stop-arm, you know, stop sign out. Is that common, that a bus should be stopped, you know, with its yellow flashers on for a fair amount of time?
It's hard to say, not knowing the exact situation. But in the bus world, if a driver has an issue on the bus, a student's ill or something, students are unbehaving, they heard a noise mechanical, our dispatch is going to say, pull over, you know, in a safe spot, and then we'll help them over the radio, whatever that need is. I get your point, though. You know, you got to be careful. And I guess that's part of the point, too, is put those yellow lights on to let anybody come and know, hey, beware, I'm here, kind of thing, right?
Right, right. But it's concerning if you're going to drive by. Like, if I've seen from one end of the street to the other, and those yellow flashers are still on, is the stop sign...
Is that stop-arm going to pop out, right?
So, to that point, in the review of citations, all the citations are reviewed for how and when it happens. And I would imagine that in those instances where perhaps, let's say, a driver pulled over because of a mechanical issue or something, or maybe, you know, the stop-arm came out later, all of that is timed. So if a car has already passed, you know, that citation is mailed. So, you know, when you look at, you have citations reviewed, you have citations then approved, and not all of them get approved. So in those kinds of instances...
It's like the red light camera.
Yeah, exactly right. It's just like red light cameras. I think the most important thing we can do as motorists is be situationally aware. Anytime we do see a bus that's pulled over to the side of the road, try to give it space. And also, you know, really maintain speed and watch speed and watch your surroundings. But there's so many reasons why it might be pulled over.
And I can say that that's happened to me, but I just stop and wait. And I do catch that driver's eye, and either they turn it off or they wave me on. Because I don't want to get a ticket, right? So, but they do, either they turn them off, they wave me off, something. So, you know, I guess it's just a matter of catching them.
I would say this also for folks at home who are watching, which is really... I would say this also for folks at home who are watching, which is really important, always obey New York State motorists laws, and that's the most important thing. So if you're in the right of way, and there, you know, the, the sign isn't out, continue to.
Both sides of the street.
Maintain, right.
If it's a median, you have to stop.
Yeah, if the sign isn't out.
If the sign isn't.
Isn't.
No, if the stop sign is out.
Right, yes, all that.
You have to stop, you have to stop.
But what I'm saying is, don't stop in the middle of the highway. Right, you know, that's the thing.
That's where most of the citations have occurred, is because there's, you know, a big divide within, let's say, North Horn Way, and it's the other side that didn't stop. So both sides have to stop.
I've seen that in New York City.
And Anne's not on the microphone, so for, again, so again, you, you know, if it's a double, if it's a double-lane road, and the bus is on one side, and the stop-arm is out, and you're going to be traversing on the other side, even though it's a median, you're supposed to stop until that stop-arm goes in.
I have a question. The Bus Tracker app, does it work? Is it accurate? Because I know that there's been a lot of, you know, people having trouble using it, and I use it, or I try to use it for my son in the morning, too, and sometimes it doesn't really show where the bus actually is, so I'm just wondering, is it actually, is it working? Is it up and running? Is it, can we rely on it?
The Bus Tracker app is up and running. I would like to say I could promise you it works perfect 100% of the time, but it is a phone web-based device, app, whatever you want to call it. We have to do our job every day, and I'll give you one example, is if your child's bus is bus one, and that bus has to come out of service today for an oil change, just, you know, what we call preventive maintenance. Then we put a substitute bus in place of your child's bus one, and we put bus two. If we don't do our job right on time, immediately, and get that data in the system, then the app is still going to be looking for bus one, which is going to be parked at our shop getting an oil change, right? So we'll, we'll get better at that. Again, we should be, and we will be 100%. The app works. I do think we have some, some frequently asked questions and help. Some of it has to do to make sure you draw the fence, you know, where you're looking for the bus. But it is working, it is a good product. We just have to get perfect at it, with always having the right bus on the right route, I would say is probably the biggest.
Yeah, and I could just add in that we've addressed, yeah, sorry. Oh, it's okay. I, I can say that we have addressed almost all those issues at this point. From the first week till now, we've, we've troubleshoot probably 40 or 50 individual parents at this point. Most of them have been one-off issues, where we've been able to successfully get them going within minutes of reaching out to us. So we ask that on the app itself, there is a, a, a section where you can put in for support, and if you put in for the support for whatever issue you're having, it does generate an email to us immediately, and we can jump right on us and we can get it checked. In a lot of cases, working with the, the transportation department, we've been able to troubleshoot them, like I said, within the same day. So we're at a point where we're very confident it's running well at this point.
And we did take our eye on the buses. So we visited facilities when we were on one of the new buses, and I believe they're all new, they're all air-conditioned, they're.
Yes.
I mean, they, it has that new car smell, so the buses are beautiful when they're arriving and they're bringing our kids back and forth, so they're in great condition.
Your knees were not against your chest.
That is true, they're very spacious.
Great there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody.
Well, in closing, I just want to echo what Dr. Rick has said. We have a great team here. It's, it's not just us, it's Sergio and everybody. They have great communication, and we'll get better each day, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. And, and again, you know, for the board and our community, we'll keep, we'll keep working at this, it's an everyday enterprise, and, and we will, we look forward to continuing to, to bring high-quality service to our children and our families. Our next presenter, we have, we're welcoming Chris Angada from Noraki Smith, who's partner. And of course, members of the finance audit committee are already very well aware, but we have some good news to share this evening with regard to the district's audit. Do you, I'm trying to save you, all right.
Well, did you?
I did.
So, okay, so let me.
Sorry.
Good evening again. Tonight we have with us Chris Angada from Noraki Smith, our external auditors. Chris is the managing partner on our, our audit.
You're good.
You're good. And, you know, again, it's a collaborative process. We're working diligently to make sure the business office team, led by Marcy Moskowitz, our business administrator, to ensure that, you know, the books are closed timely and quickly, not to take any of Chris's thunder, but, you know, we try to do the audit before the audit, so that we do end up, you know, having a very smooth process. So, you know, Chris is going to present tonight an overview of our year-end financial statements. He did an in-depth review with Audit and Finance on September 30th, and so I'll pass it over to Chris.
Thank you, Anne. And good evening, Board of Education. I'm Christopher Angada, partner at Noraki Smith. On behalf of my entire firm, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education and the district for your continuing confidence in retaining my firm as your independent auditors. As Anne mentioned, I am here to present an overview of the fiscal 2025 audit. First, just to confirm the scope of our services, the district retained Noraki Smith to perform an audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June 20th, June 30th, 2025, in accordance with professional standards. As part of our audit, we also performed an audit of the extra classroom activity funds that is performed on the cash basis of accounting. As part of our audit, we do contemplate issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations on approving the accounting procedures and internal controls of the district. Just a few comments on the conduct of the audit. I'd like to commend the district on a timely and accurate closing of its books and records. As Anne mentioned, you know, it's a complete team effort here at the district, you know, wanted to just take this opportunity to thank Anne, Marcy, and the entire business office for the excellent cooperation we received throughout the course of the audit. There's a lot that goes into our audit, especially of a district this size, so all of our requests, all of our inquiries, all of our back and forth was always answered very timely, succinctly, and with complete documentation. So thank you to everyone involved in that process. We did meet with the audit committee of the Board of Education to present the financial statements in great detail, and I just wanted to mention that there was one new accounting and reporting standard to be implemented by the district this year, which was under Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 101 for compensated absences, and I am happy to report that the district did successfully implement that standard this year. There are three auditors' reports that we did issue at this point in time. I'm happy to report to the board this evening that we did issue a cleaner and modified opinion in those auditors' reports, meaning that the financial statements of the district present fairly in all material respects in accordance with our professional standards. Just a few highlights on the district's financial statements this year. The general fund annual budget was within the tax cap as propagated by New York State and operated positively. The general fund fund balance amounts were all within reasonable and legal limits, including the New York State's statutory 4% limit. There was a positive change in the general fund's fund balance for the year. There are two sets of financial statements in the district's financial statements. There is the current focus financial statements and the district-wide, which is on a full accrual basis of accounting. That statement includes the long-term assets and liabilities, so I just wanted to mention a few highlights with respect to that statement. The capital assets this year of the district, netted depreciation totaled about $188 million. Bonds payable was about $33.5 million, which results in a current-year principal payment of about $8.4 million. The energy performance contract totaled about $909,000, with a current-year principal payment of about $896,000. I will highlight that this is the 25, 26 will be the last year on the energy performance contract. The total OPEB liability, that's your other post-employment benefits, that liability totaled about $403.9 million. Once again, that is actuarially determined, so the district retains a third-party actuary to calculate the future cost of, of post-employment benefits. There was an increase this year of about $7.5 million in that liability, with current year payments of about $10.5. It's on a pay-as-you-go basis, so the current, the current-year obligation to the district was about $10.5 million.
There's nothing to do about that liability, it just exists, it's on the books.
Correct, correct. The district has no mechanism to fund that obligation. And the other two pensions are for the employee retirement plan, as well as the teacher's retirement plan. The employer retirement plan was still in an underfunded position, so the district shared in, in that allocation of that liability, which totaled about $7.7 million, whereas the teacher's retirement plan was in actually overfunded position as of, as of the measurement period, and so the district shared in the asset portion of that, which totaled about $16.6 million. As I mentioned at the onset of my presentation, we do contemplate issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations. I am happy to report to the board this evening that we did not cite the district for any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, as well as we had no current-year recommendations, and all prior-year recommendations that were offered by us as part of our audit, prior-year audits, were fully implemented by the district. So clean slate going forward into the future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board of Education may have this evening. Thank you.
I, um, thank you very much, Mr. Angada. I, I also want to offer a tremendous amount of appreciation to Dr. Vakara Taisch and all of the members in the business office, and I know as Mr. Angada would, would, would agree, the, the audit is a big undertaking, it's a huge process that, that we engage in annually. It's one of the most important things that we can do to ensure our fiduciary responsibility and public trust, and it, it requires a, a great deal of planning, and it's always great to hear how responsive and receptive our, our team members were to making sure we're getting that done. So Anne, thank you. I know we have a calendar which we follow each year, and it's very, very important, and you know, as you know, the business office does plan to the day on, on when items and materials and functions are really to be completed, and that's the purpose there, is because every day matters, and if, if we're, you know, if we're on schedule, we're, we're, we're happy, and if we're not, nobody's happy. So congratulations, Anne, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Can I ask one question? As mentioned, the Audit and Finance Committee did meet and went into the details of the financials, and not having any corrective actions really is a huge feather in the cap to Dr. Vakara Taisch, Ms. Moskowitz, and the entire business office, so congratulations to all of you. My question is, how do we compare it to other districts? So, you know, we have no corrective actions, we're applauding ourselves for this. How does this compare to other districts of our size, and other districts that your firm is auditing? You audited several, I believe.
Sure, yeah. So our firm audits about 23 on an external basis. We also are the internal auditors, mostly on an island for, you know, about 95 school districts, so we see a lot from an internal control perspective. From an external audit perspective, I would say on average, about 25% of our clients on an annual basis have recommendations. So, you know, it's, we've also been longstanding with, with some of those clients, so their internal controls, their policies, procedures are, have embedded over a number of years, likewise with White Plains. But I think every year brings new challenges, right? So a change in, in someone in the payroll might change a, a step in the process, and I know that's something that has been, you know, over the last couple of years, kind of a revolving door, so to speak, but, but the district has always come to bat in terms of making sure that those policies, those procedures are followed on a step-by-step basis. So I would say kind of right at the top in terms of, you know, the, the overall in comparison to what we've seen previously.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
It is, of course, a ple, sorry, John. Of course, my pleasure to, to welcome this evening for any updates, comments, concerns, reports, our ex officio as Board of Education members, frozen chairs.
All right. Hey, hey, guys. Good evening, everyone. We have officially made it through the first full month of school, as Targa has been for all of us. I'm proud to be able to report the strides our elementary schools have made throughout the month. MAS began their year with the unveiling of new fields, as well as, as a successful back-to-school picnic. MAS also began their year celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month on September the 15th. Historical figures are showcased on interactive boards in the halls while also being introduced in classrooms through read-alouds. MAS's trade of the month for October is being a helpful friend. Teachers are further integrating these values into students' everyday learning via morning circles and collaborative discussions. This theme is the perfect segment, segment into the much-anticipated Unity Day. MAS is in the works of planning a full day of activities and fun. Over at GW, October has been a month full of connection with their speech pathologists paving the way for the recognition of AAC Awareness Month, Augmentative and Alternative Education. This has been a crucial part in building the understanding of communication device support. They've also been key catalysts in busting myths associated with AAC use. This month, GW's community meetings have revolved around creativity and self-expression, which have opened doors for discussions on Hispanic Heritage Month. Students participated in reads of books such as Alma and How She Got Her Name alongside Where Are You From? These stories culminate around ideas of identity and culture. Students were able to recognize their own personal attributes and what makes them unique. Positivity has been a key fundamental part in GW's themes of the month and has been a powerful leeway into Unity Day, where they plan to create chains of unity. At Post Road, students are welcomed back via picnic on September the 12th, where a grand opening was held for their new Gaga pit. There was an array of activities for everyone to enjoy, with the most important one being the selection of food, of course. Dad's slash special adult Take Your Child to School Day was a hit and was hosted in collaboration with Grandpas United and the Youth Bureau. There were some guest speakers as well. Open house occurred on the 16th and the 30th with a fair-style presentation of all areas, including PPS and support programs for Post Road, for Post Road students. On October the 3rd, the Tigers in Training Event was a huge hit. Post Road students were able to show their support for White Plains High School students while showing off their Post Road pride. Lastly, this past Saturday, Post Road PTA hosted an annual fiesta to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. There was a bunch of crafts, music, dancing, and once again, most importantly, food from all of the Latin American countries. Church Street School started their year with a grand opening of their new and improved library. Board of Education members Jessica Buck and Dr. Ricka attended, as well as others who supported the Church Street School updates. Two students who have checked out the most books at Church Street did the rip and cutting. Church Street School hosted a fantastic picnic and had students paint rocks of kindness, which will be displayed in their garden. Fifth graders were able to publish their first Church Street School Chronicles issue. This was done completely on their own time. Most students utilized lunch. Grandpas United began their lunch program where fifth graders spent time with grandpas twice a month to play games and get to know one another. Looking ahead, Church Street School aims to highlight Bullying Prevention Month with Themes and Lessons of Inclusion Weekly. This aligns with their book of the month, The Invisible Boy, as well as themes of respect. Students are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with an upcoming assembly to highlight Latin American countries. Students have been exposed to an array of literature to expand their knowledge on Hispanic heritage. Lastly, Church Street School's vegetables are growing and will be sold on Friday the 24th. And finally, at Ridgway, on September the 18th, the school welcomed Guardians for Dad's and Special Adults Day, where they were able to spend a morning with their children. On September the 29th, students had arguably the most important day of the year, Picture Day. On October the 3rd, Ridgway students joined students from other elementary schools to run on the field at White Plains High School at the Tigers in Training Event. This past Saturday, the PTA held a car wash to support the fifth grade class. Lastly, the Girls on the Run team began practicing for their fall season. So you continue, Eastview recently wrapped up a vibrant Fall Spirit Week and a highly successful Fall Tiger Fest, packed with a variety of student activities, including exploring school safety and responsible decision-making with Officer Jasmine Albert and K-9 Homer through real-life simulations, where they practice refusal skills, navigating peer pressure, and making safe online choices. Students also engaged in hands-on STEM challenges that encouraged innovation, teamwork, and critical thinking. At Project Adventure, a team-building initiative allowed students to develop their communication and collaboration skills through interactive problem-solving exercises. In addition, Therapy Dog Daya and Dr. Quinn offered students a chance to unwind and connect in a calm, welcoming environment. These sessions promoted emotional well-being and were a highlight of the week. Highlands hosted a successful Field Day, filled with community-building activities like volleyball, soccer, obstacle courses, and tug-of-war. The event fostered school spirit, teamwork, and fun for both students.
The event fostered school spirit, teamwork, and fun for both students and staff. Looking ahead, preparations are underway for Highlands' annual Fred Gressler Walk-a-thon, scheduled for October 31st. This PTA-supported fundraiser will feature music, costumes, karaoke, and multiple prize opportunities for top fundraisers. Students are encouraged to dress up and participate in this high-energy, school-spirited event. At Rochambeau, the faculty met on September 17th to continue professional development work with an IDE consultant focusing on problem-based learning strategies. On September 18th, Rochambeau combined its open house with Dad's and Special Adults Take Your Child to School Day. Families attended class sessions in both morning and afternoon blocks with a midday luncheon for students, staff, and guests. Community organizations, including Westchester Community College and Centro Hispano and the Youth Bureau, had provided support for the day. In total, 28 families attended, marking the highest turnout in recent memory. On September 26th, the school held a groundbreaking ceremony for a new community pollinator garden. The garden is funded by a $5,000 grant from the White Plains Youth Climate Action Fund, awarded to teacher Paul Perattis. This garden will serve as a multidisciplinary tool for problem-based, student-centered learning. Up ahead, on October 21st, students will tour Pace University to explore post-secondary options. And on October 22nd, 10th and 11th grade students will take their PSAT, supporting academic planning and preparation. On September 25th, White Plains High School held its annual Student Activities Fair, giving students the opportunity to explore the many clubs and extracurricular opportunities available at White Plains High School. The event was a huge success, with high levels of enthusiasm and participation from students eager to get involved in school life. On October 3rd, White Plains High School hosted a welcome lunch for all transfer students new to the school this year. The lunch offered a welcoming space for students to connect with peers, ask questions, and become more familiar with the White Plains High School community. It also helped build relationships between new and current students, supporting a smooth transition into high school life. Upcoming, White Plains High School is preparing for an exciting Spirit Week, which will take place from October 14th to October 17th, ending with a high-energy pep rally and the homecoming football game on the evening of October 17th. Students are encouraged to show their school pride and participate in themed events throughout the week. In addition, on October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., the Latino Coalition will host a vibrant Hispanic History Month celebration. The celebration will take place in the B1 cafeteria and is open to students, families, and community members. The event will feature live musical performances, dancing, games, and arts and crafts. Lastly, on October 31st, the Class of 2026 will host a trunk-or-tree event for local elementary students. From 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., families can enjoy a festive, safe Halloween experience with decorated car trunks, costumes, and candy. The event highlights White Plains High School's commitment to community engagement and student leadership. In the Athletics Department, over the summer, the Summer Academy has had strong participation in both athletic and academic programs. For the Athletics, speed and strength training programs flourished, enhanced by new equipment in the Tigers Den, providing more training opportunities for students. While in the Academics, students took part in hands-on interdisciplinary activities, including testing electrolyte levels in sports drinks, designing physical therapy tools for injury rehab, and conducting chicken wing dissections to understand muscle and tendon injuries. As for the school year, middle school modified teams began their competitive seasons. Meanwhile, at the high school, the Boys' Country Team placed first at the Suffering Invitational and participated in the Woods Trail Run in Vermont. And Riley Baumann, a diver, earned first place at the Valley Central Dive Meet. On Friday night, Eastview and Highlands Elementary students attended Tigers in Training Night to cheer on our high school football team, which won a thrilling game against Ramapo, 33 to 32. Varsity teams are nearing the end of their regular seasons and are preparing for postseason competition. We wish all of our student athletes the best in the playoffs. That is all for tonight's report. Thank you.
Thanks to you both. You know, I really have to, there's so much, of course, to celebrate and to be proud of. The transfer, the opportunity for the welcome and the lunch for the transfer students, we're up over, back over 2,000 students at White Plains High School again. We've had students who are now part of the White Plains family from all over the United States of America, as well as the world. So, to be able to come together and celebrate the newest members of the White Plains family, kudos to White Plains High School, the faculty, staff, and administration, and of course, our students for being so mindful on how important that is. I also have to just give a shout-out to the board. You know, Tigers in Training came from the board. And, you know, Dr. Lteese, I mean, years ago, right, we talked about this, and then it was made possible and brought to life by Mr. Cameron, Mr. Chappas, and all of the members of White Plains High School.
The administrators that showed up on a Friday night.
Yep, absolutely. The administrative team who was there on Friday night to cheer our youngest Tigers on, as well as our varsity team, and of course, our, you know, marching band, and our cheerleaders. And, you know, a great, great evening.
To expose those kids to the excitement and like the hatchery and the excitement of like a high school football game.
Yeah. And it was a great-
Build that community pride.
Was a great game. Got a little too close for me, but, you know, we came out with the W, so we'll take it, right? But thank you very much, ladies, for your reports. I also, again, you know, so many celebrations, Unity Day, pep rally, that we mentioned PTA Council. And, you know, at PTA Council, the PTA, and I think we can do it. I really, I believe we can do it. We're working for 100% participation. And, you know, that means, right, parent-teacher association, so all of us. I don't know if I had previously joined up this year. I joined again, just in case, today. So, I do, of course, encourage everybody to join the PTA and then to participate to the level at which you're comfortable and you're able. You know, we all have very busy lives, but just being part of the PTA and that work is a great step forward. And if we can get that 100% participation, that would be so wonderful. Halloween's, Halloween, right? Halloween's right around the corner. And trunk-or-treat's gonna be taking place again at the high school. Everybody loves trunk-or-treats, so we're looking forward to that. Hopefully have great weather. Could be like last weekend or this past weekend, imagine. What's that?
I have trunk-or-treat stuff for us.
Oh, you already got it? Oh, fantastic, fantastic.
No, I, you're gonna decorate-
You're gonna do it? Yeah, nice, nice. Walk-Bike-Roll to School Day is this Wednesday. And so, thanks again for the PTA for supporting that. It's gonna be a nice opportunity for our Tigers. This evening on the agenda, item 9E is the revisions to the strategic plan. Thanks again to the Strategic Planning Committee, as well as the Board of Education for supporting that annual effort. We also have tenure appointments for teaching assistants, item 7C. Congratulations in advance to those colleagues. And the Smart Safety Storage Protection Resolution is item 9D. This Board of Education has supported a reminder to all responsible gun owners in the state of New York to make sure that there is appropriate safety and storage for those weapons in the home and elsewhere. And thanks to the board for continuing in that mission to remind everybody to keep safe, to keep our children safe. And I did also just to make mention about the budget. We are gonna keep a very close eye, and we've already begun advocating, but the telegraphing is already happening. The state is very, telegraphing a great deal of concern with regard to the state budget and also funds, or rather, I should say, deficits that could potentially be created through reduction in the federal government sending New Yorkers back their money that they send to Washington again, right? So, it's your money. And we have to continue to advocate and make sure that the focus does, remains where it should be, and that's supporting kids and supporting the future, not just the state of New York, but also the United States of America. So, we'll continue to do that and keep everybody posted in terms of budget. That concludes my report. Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next, we'll move on to public participation. Do we have any public participation tonight? Good night to our students and thank you again.
See you on Thursday in class.
Yay! Okay, so we don't have any public participation. We'll move right to our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, item B, 4B, I'd like to draw your attention to the very generous donations. Well, this is, this we get annually, and we're grateful for it every year, and the kids love it. You know, they really, they absolutely love the Students Dictionary and Animal Gazetteer here that's donated annually by Mr. Lent on behalf of the Elks. This year, they donated 488 dictionaries to all of the third-grade students in the White Plains City School District. Thank you so much. White Plains High School Class of 1984 donated two six-foot benches to White Plains High School in honor of two educators, Harry Jefferson and Tom Eaton. That's from the Class of 1984. A variety of school supplies were donated to the schools by Ashley Nutt. The following grants were donated by the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools: $18,000 grant to help fund the Beyond Broadway Dance Program in all five elementary schools for the 2025-2026 academic year; $2,600 grant to help fund the AP History Class Trip to Edward Kennedy Institute in Boston to take part in the Today's Vote program. Also want to thank Jeremy Abramson, the Vice President of the Premier Collection, in conjunction with Subaru Loves to Learn, who awarded Eastview Middle School $18,000 grant funding in the 2024-2025 academic year. Really generous donations, always grateful. Thank you very, very much to all of our donors.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any White Plains resident?
Yes, sir.
So, it's very nice to have White Plains residents helping White Plains. That's on behalf of his company. That's terrific.
Yeah, and actually, Jessica, you and Dr. Ricka, you and I were at the Friends fundraiser, yeah, fundraising. And our community is just so fortunate to have so many people that care about this community, and that's what makes White Plains special, right? And the thing that we left at the Friends event was that no one has better friends than we do. So, I'm very, I'm humbled by this, and this is not just this meeting, it is every single meeting. So, just to reiterate, you know, our sincere thanks for everything that our community does for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to individual action item A. The acceptance of the External Auditor's Annual Financial Statement, extra classroom activity funds, financial statement, management letter, and corrective action plan for the year ended June 30th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions? We had the presentation, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Budget Development Calendar for the 2026 through 2027 school year as attached. We reviewed that calendar at the Finance Committee meeting, and it's standard.
Non-negotiable.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have any questions concerned? All in favor?
Aye. We have opportunities for public input like we always do.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, I think October, gosh, community input sessions are coming up in just a couple weeks.
Are they?
Yeah, it's on the calendar.
Thank you.
October 27th.
So, next, we have individual action item C, the recommended approval of the establishment of one custodian position, 12-month, one FTE effective October 1st, 2025, and the recommended approval of the abolishment of one senior custodian position, 12-month, effective October 1st, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the B-Smart Gun Safety Resolution, and as discussed by Dr. Ricka earlier, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Jessica, for bringing that up.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Buck.
Thank you.
I think it's like five, we were talking about that, yeah. So, thank you always for supporting.
Oh, absolutely.
And spreading throughout, you know, districts, many districts are taking this effort to spread that message. So, thank you.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the White Plains Strategic Plan for 2025 through 2026, as discussed earlier by Dr. Ricka. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions?
Just that the one pager is-
Paige is awesome.
Super informative, I love it.
Yes, I love it.
Info-gravity is amazing. I do like it. Very clear.
That got Dr. Hand's seal of approval, including the graphic wave at the bottom.
I think it looks great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lastly, we have, we have its resolve that the Board of Education hereby approves and authorizes the Board President and Superintendent of Schools to execute a certain stipulation of settlement in connection with an impartial hearing, reporting from Case 664217. And a copy of this stipulation has been previously reviewed by members of the Board of Education. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we're gonna move to our board discussion, our board reports. I think I can say for finance, Craig, I think you've summed it up well, and we've seen the presentation. HR meeting, which we discuss confidential employee matters, was held. Any other subcommittee meetings?
Pause.
Yeah. Well, we had the Special Education that. We had our first meeting with our new Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Tasic, and it was a get-to-know-you session and talk about the vision for the program moving forward. I can speak for everyone who was there and say it was exciting. Really looking forward to working together. I think we're very lucky. All 7,000 students are lucky. Our specialized students are really lucky.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Case 17.
Yes.
So, our Policy Committee, the Policy Committee met, and we took a first look at a few policies, which will be on the agenda in November for their first read, having to do with student records and confidentiality, data and information privacy, student privacy, and parent and student rights. So, coming in November. Curriculum and Instruction also met. We looked at preliminary data on the June Regents results. Again, there will be more forthcoming in November. We also looked, again, preliminary results, promising results on the NWEA Administration in the fall and elementary state testing in ELA and math. So, again, all preliminary, but more information forthcoming.
Thank you. Anything, any of our-
I'll also mention just one other thing. The Health and Safety Team met, and there is information in the board agenda. I'll just mention a few highlights. Over the summer, there was a changeover to the high school camera system, updated cloud-based system, sort of one system, zero I's has expanded. There was commentary on federal law enforcement activity in White Plains, and again, an emphasis that our school protocols that have been in place exist as they were before, and no one has access to our students without having legal rights to that access. Safety plan, we had to put in place in AED Annex. We've always had those processes in place, but now they had to be added to the safety plan. And also, I think importantly, we added to the visitor use agreements, what to do in cases of emergency, and that visitors also have to follow the code of conduct when they're on our grounds, in our buildings. Some challenges having to do with the County Board of Elections using our buildings and safety protocols being in place, and Eastview and Rochambeau vestibules being worked on.
Coming.
Yep. Thank you, Ben, for the food, the wellness, that one will come up, that you just reminded me of that.
A lot of memes.
Yep. So, before we move for adjournment, John Shepherd and John Mishavitz, please wave to us and thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for doing everything you do to make sure that our meetings are inclusive to our community members that cannot be here in person. Thank you. Yeah.
Just also, before we end, because we were talking about, you know, celebrating Board of Education Recognition Month, as well as Principal Appreciation Month, it is also- is also important to note that this past Saturday was President Heller's birthday. It's also President Heller's Birthday Month, right? The whole month is it. Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Everyone should adopt that policy. Let's have a first reading on that for all of us here.
Second reading, you have two more.
May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Oh, gosh. Let's go celebrate.[1776.13]